Thursday was one here.
Yeah, I know. Now it's.
Twenty-third through the third.
One twenty-three?
Yes. No, twelve twenty-three, three one five.
Six thirty. Get started. Alrighty, it is six thirty, we're gonna get started. The January call order, the January seventh, uh, select board meeting, first order of business approved over a minute. January third. Were there any additions, corrections, or attractions?
Mine are certified.
Certified, so we'll do it then. By consensus, we will adopt those creative input. So I gotta keep one on the down side. Yes.
Um, I have something for the warrant from the rectory. Do you want to discuss now or later?
Why don't we do it under, when we get to town administration, we'll do it under, um, we'll talk about it in a town law.
That's okay, thank you.
Any other community input? Okay, so partner has, is the building inspector coming in?
Yeah.
Right? I know he has, uh, the letter has been received by the junkyard and the camp owner on Rollins Road folks. And also received letters, we are waiting for response from both, the junkyard has thirty days. And, uh, the Rollins Road, they've got less time than that, so they would've called, reached out to town. Tried to resolve that issue. Fire department's now to your highway department. Go over your handles.
PO for, actually, what, last month, we didn't get the bill timely. But we ran out of cutting gas and stuff, and we're working at the transfer station, they had to cut some metal off the. So we had to go and buy gas, we built the floor into seven dollars, et cetera, all propane, et cetera, I mean, the, uh, acetylene, acetylene and the.
Ah, okay, so that was, okay.
Can he still hear from this, from eighteen?
Why don't we, why don't we move it in, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
Sure. Uh, I'll move purchase order fifteen sixty-four to air gas on the amount of four oh seven, is it thirteenth?
Correct.
Uh, for, uh, low.
Second.
Okay, move to second, so, so this, because it came in, the bill came in late.
Yeah, the invoice date was twelve twenty-seven.
And, and that, so, it's a gray area, and I'll check with the auditor, but it needs a twenty nineteen purchase order, and that's where I think we're gonna get them now.
Right. Alright.
We had to have it.
There you go, okay. So purchase order fifteen sixty-four is a move in a second, and any other questions or comments? Seeing none, all of the papers say aye?
Aye.
Aye, aye, please. Rock your glasses, every time I look up. I wonder water.
I have nothing else unless you get something for me.
No, I don't have anything else on here, January, Fire Department, Posting Roads has a placeholder for after. Anything to put yours for anyone else? Alrighty, have a great night. Chief? Do we have anything besides the non?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, purchase order number one five four four, made out to Glock. I'd like to send Officer Hancock to Glock handgun armors course, and that's two hundred and fifty dollars. How come I don't pro development line item?
For this year, just current.
Twenty nineteen, yes.
I move purchase order one five four four for Glock, for, um, Glock armors class for two hundred and fifty dollars.
So that. Sort of fifteen forty-four is a move in a second, is Officer Hancock the person that was in last year?
No, it was Officer Joy.
Okay, I couldn't remember if this was the pressure for him, okay. Better have someone in the house.
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions? Yeah, it's a purchase order fifteen forty-four made out to Glock. Okay, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Purchase order number one five four five to six hour, to send Officer Hancock to the rifle armors course. And that's coming out of pro development line item as well, and that's for four hundred and thirty dollars.
I'll move purchase order fifteen forty-five to, it's a six hour, um, for four hundred and thirty dollars for rifle armors class.
My question, if anyone would ask, I'm sure you already know what it was.
No, I have a question.
Go ahead.
Is, is this because, is he the one of the, is he the one that's the, something that died at the post?
He's on the SWAT team?
Yes.
Uh, no, Officer, Officer Joy was our firearms and rifle armor. Those are folks that can take them apart, repair them, and, and, and.
Oh, that's what they're.
That's what this is.
Oh, it's not a shooting.
No, this is just so, we have someone in the house that can repair, replace parts.
Oh.
The first one was for handguns.
This one's for rifles?
Just rifles?
Rifles and shotguns.
Alrighty, all those in favor of purchase order, is there any question?
No.
Okay. All those in favor of purchase order fifteen forty-five say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? I have the year, I was thinking about the date.
No. And I just have a question concerning the, the warding of the warrant article for the radar message board.
Yes.
Um, is it going to be warded so it's contingent upon the successful?
Uh.
A grant, or is it just gonna be, we'll apply for the grant to offset it?
Cause you can't do it.
Looking off into the backyard wall.
You can't, um, you have to get your grant once you can, you have permission to buy it, right? You can't apply for your grant right now until.
We've, we've already submitted an application for it, yes.
Oh, you have, you just don't.
However, we, we have not received word if they're going to accept the application or not. So, I mean, the money's in the, in the CIP to pay for the whole thing anyway. I just, I'm just, I guess I'm just cautioning you folks not to, I would like to see, so it's not worded that, that it's contingent upon.
Right.
The successful.
And this is the one you get, bring in my town report, bring in every week, I never look at it. It's like a reference, however.
I don't know, I, I, I don't think it was our intention to, to say that.
So do we have to say that we're gonna take the whole amount out of CIP? And then put a clause in, and then the, um, the grant isn't, um, granted?
Well, you have to take the whole amount off anyway.
Yeah, well, I think.
You have to take the whole amount out, why?
Could we, yeah.
You're not gonna pay the whole amount out.
If the grant you reimburse them.
Right, right.
So.
What's that?
Do you get, the grant will be reimbursed then?
So you're gonna put that back in CIP?
Yeah, that, that would be, I would think, right?
I don't think any of it's coming out of CIP, I don't think there was any balance in CIP, I think it was taxation plus grant. So, I don't think CIP plays into it at all, it's something that came from that process, and it's a capital item. But we should check into that. So yes, we can word it so that we may apply any grant.
If we do, yes, we can. We're, we're not gonna deal with a warrant tonight, well, apparently, but, um, that's the twenty-first meeting. But, yes, so, you know, I'm making notes. It's for the, the board, right, the, what's it called again? Message, it gets a message.
Radar message, radar message board.
It's something that detects your speed and flash a loop.
Yes. Who does that, but you can, you can, uh, set it up so it can say town meeting this day, caution, emergency zone, handrail closed, uh.
Cool.
Numbered, it's small, and it's solar powered as well.
Yeah, that's the emergency. Anything else besides non-public?
That's the, so that I have, the poll, I want you to have something for me.
Now, so I think our motion to go to non-publicity of the first amendment?
I'll move.
Second amendment? Motion, that's a move in seconds, we go to a non-public session for a personnel issue. Roll call Denise?
Yes.
Miles?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Or formula, you've already, every single time, every time you go in or out, you move and you say.
Yes, I'm a.
Is that what you go with?
I think that was.
Yes.
It's on.
Or on? Alright.
I assumed you did it.
So for, so for welfare, um, you can, you can move it, so, for welfare case twenty nineteen dash zero zero two. Uh, there are recommendations?
I'll move that we approve four hundred and sixty dollars for a welfare case.
Do I commit to do it second?
We can do it by motion, so four ten provincial, fifty for food, that's a second, okay. Alright, any discussion, seeing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, alright, welcome to welfare.
Very good, thank you.
Have a nice night. Chief? Come on down. You just made it. I know you're excited. We're gonna be on the down, so.
Oh, oh.
Your perfect time.
Good, well, I don't have too much. Couple things, again, it's mostly because it's the new year. Couple POs we need to discuss. First PO is fifteen oh eight, and it's to Sea Coast Chief Fire Officers, Community Mutual Aid District. Basically, it's our annual dues for, uh, the start, basically, as our hazmat, the large incident. They provide us with that coverage, two hundred bucks.
I move purchase order one five CR eight, Sea Coast Chief Fire Officers Mutual Aid for the annual dues for two thousand and nineteen, two hundred and dollars.
Second it. Alright, purchase order fifteen oh eight is a move in seconds, any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
And like I said, that basically is, uh, coverage for hazardous material. We can also use them for, um, command type things, if we have a large incident, that, you know, if we need to bring in massive amounts of mutual aid, we can come and support that system.
Do you just give Caroline that folder at the end, Mark?
I will, yes.
Okay, so we'll keep it up then.
Why don't we do, here it is, right there.
They wanna stick it in another folder, and she's wondering where it is.
Yeah.
Okay.
That works. Second one is another mutual aid district, this is the Community Mutual Association, and that's the local, for the nine communities that we board. Uh, we have annual dues, uh, purchase order fifteen oh nine, it's two hundred and thousand dollars, and as I said, uh, this goes to, uh, our local nine member, actually, it's ten now, South Burke. They were never in, they joined the other day, and the annual meeting that we have in Exeter every year. So they finally, now, well, former chief was not a supporter of mutual aid. Uh, being, having to pay for mutual aid is what he thought it was, and it really isn't that way. Right now that there's a new chief in there, he's kinda come around to the point where he had something new to do.
So there was a fire, shout those calls, and we were helping.
Oh, yeah, we're still gonna go.
Right.
Yeah, 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 he just had a different philosophy.
Alright, okay.
So this is, uh, again, fifteen oh nine is for Community Mutual Aid, thousand dollars, and it's up. I'll move, purchase order fifteen oh nine, it's the Community Mutual Aid Association, and, uh, one thousand dollars for two thousand dollars in mutual aid dues.
Second.
Basically, that gets us, Summersworth Houses, the air beam, which goes to all the communities that pay to exist, it's not these towns. So if there's a fire, Elliot needs to get the air beam, it goes down, the door doesn't use it so much anymore, it'll go, Berwick, South Burke, and to us, whoever requests it. But there's also other things we get out of that, they have a port account machine, which is what we use annually to do our fit testing. So there's three or four different pieces of equipment that are incorporated underneath this blanket of the Community Mutual Aid District that we all share.
And the dues go to offset the cost of maintaining the equipment.
Yep.
Out of curiosity, is there any other dues?
The air beam, and actually, I think I might've explained it probably before you were on, is, basically, it's housed in Summersworth, and it's a, it augments filling air bottles, uh, looking for the guys at the scene. Because, of course, when we were out there, it's full, but you can go through a bottle in eighteen minutes. So when you come out and you get your rehab, and you get ready to go back in, your bottle gets filled with this unit. Basically, now it's an old plumber's wagon kind of rig, it carries a cascade system inside, and they fill the bottles. So the cascade continually keep going till the incident's wrapped up. But, that's the old bar, the old system, they have a new one, they've got a two hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollar grant, and they've got a new, uh, it's in the pipeline right now, a new, uh, air beam. But it's not gonna be just an air beam, it's still gonna have a cascade system in the back that fills bottles, but it's also gonna be, kind of like a short bus kind of thing, it's gonna have a ten seat rehab section in the middle of it. So if it's, like it is tonight, you know, snow, or it's fourteen degrees this morning, guys, and you get a cold, you can go in a warm spot, and grab a pile of bark, and rest up for air before we shove you back out to go back in the car. Yep. So it's a whole, uh, unit that's gonna go into service sometime this spring.
Nice.
Yeah. And the last one I have.
I'll move on to this one first.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Any other discussion on fifteen oh nine? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? All any questions?
And then there's this one for, kind of dropped it in your lap the other night when I was, you know, you had your meeting on Thursday, for the dispatching services and the radio equipment, the MOU agreement, I know we have to pay for it. And, um, I know you guys were busy the other night, and this didn't really get active on, I don't know if we wanna do something with this tonight or not, as far as it's presented to you. The dispatching services, it has, uh, that on there, and I originally put in the budget for this year, and I level funded it, because that's what I, the number I had to work with, it was six thousand eighty-six dollars. It's actually gone up by three hundred and fifty-one dollars.
Okay.
I got the invoice from them the other day, so it's actually sixty-four fifty-one for this year for dispatching services. Other half of this is the, we discussed the overall line item, I wanted to add for the radio equipment to the budget, and then also cover the MOU piece of the buy.
Right.
And that's what this is, yeah, forty-four fifty-two. The first installment of the three we need to make to own repeater equipment that we had to purchase.
Three we need to make, but yearly, not three same as this year, but yearly, one, they meant a year.
The next, yes. Over the next three years.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, that's the way it was set up, rather than that, but, uh, having to make this come up, when we set up this with the agreement within a, in a complete, he's chief of police, he says, oh, we'll just spread it out in three years. I'm not sure you remember that horror story when it came in there.
Did you?
Kind of fell in all of our laps, and it's like, whoa, whoa. We kind of worked it around, and this is where we are, so, this is the PO for that, for the whole. Ten nine something.
So, okay, I'll move purchase order one five six eight, City of Dover, for ten thousand nine hundred and three dollars. Six thousand four hundred and fifty-one forty-six is dispatching service, and four thousand four hundred and fifty-two for communication equipment for the MOU that we agree with Dover. So you said it went up, how much?
Three hundred and fifty-one dollars.
I'll have a second. Yeah, I have a question. I have to move in a second, good. So, Mark. Colin, we got the, we will have the money, the budget, that's, uh, the select boards version, the budget base version, or the default budget passes, there's money there for dispatching services, so the three hundred.
Contractual, so.
Right, well, that's no saying, so that's not a problem, so that, that's covered. So the three hundred and fifty-one dollars, what is that, the floor, if we go to default, is contractually, you're right, so.
Should be the whole amount.
That, that should be the whole amount, but we didn't have the, we didn't have the dollar, we sent it to the budget, so I think we can absorb the three hundred and fifty-one somewhere, but. The, um, communications equipment also was contractual, but it wasn't, um, just there was a line, and the, I didn't, again, I didn't believe it, but one night I didn't bring the book in, and the night I did it.
I had a discussion the other day, and Caroline brought up the current default budget, and like I said, that's why I had included that.
So that's included in the default budget, I just wanna make sure.
If that line comes into the budget that I presented, if it gets passed.
MOU, um, four hundred and forty, four, thousand four hundred and forty-five, yeah, so that's part of the default budget.
It is already.
Yes, the appropriation is.
It's a contractual issue, I just, before we move on something, and, and it said default budget passes, and the other one's, no. I don't want to have to find forty-four hundred dollars in the budget somewhere, but it is a contractual issue, so it should be in there.
Yes, no, it shows fifteen thousand, what's the fifteen thousand?
The other one was for, to buy two more portable.
That's what I thought, okay, yeah, ten thousand, uh, total for that, okay, so fifteen thousand in the budget, but contractually, we're only being able to move forward with the four four five two, because that is.
I just want, before we vote, I wanna make sure that we have.
Yeah.
Our, our, we'll understand that, obviously. Got teeth crossed and dyed out and all that.
And it's the MOU for three years.
Okay. Alright, so with that understanding, is there any other discussion of purchase order fifteen sixty-eight? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? All doing the. Process, I wanna make sure we're all.
Will you?
All kind of on the same page here.
And, and as you said, that's why I always start budgeting way back when, that's why I asked for that fifteen, and I was gonna stick to the point for a lot of people, budget people and whatnot, on why we needed to get so many radios up front. We've kind of, I don't know where it sits, we'll find out, I guess, come Saturday, but, uh, the original, uh, warrant article now, I guess, they hit twelve, it's gonna be up for a little bit. And this was to augment that, that's where the other ten is going. So, I'm not gonna be coming in here every year and asking for that amount of money, every year we'll, I get two more radios if we can have that additional line item, so we keep moving forward out of the operation budget.
And the budget committee's meeting on Wednesday?
We are meeting on Wednesday.
To vote on what number they're sending, what they're sending out here on Wednesday, so.
And you'll be there, obviously, and you understand.
Obviously, if you need to, if you felt like we need to be there, you know.
This coming Wednesday?
Yeah.
If there's an issue, you know, we're fine.
Yeah.
Okay.
I think we've kind of beat that up to that, so hopefully, hopefully people understand the urgency.
Any other, anything else for us?
Nothing else that I have.
I have kept the fire palms on here just for a placeholder for us all, so we don't have to say, uh, especially the one down.
Cheryl Lavin had a talk with me the other day, um, we kind of got cut off, and she had something she didn't mean, but they're still doing something, they wanted some information from us, as a, the town as a whole has been looking into maybe adding stuff. Trying to find out whether or not that's something that we own, your association owns, or whatever, but they were to the point where he was saying that it's, uh, he understands that that one's a little bit failed, and we tried to use it.
Right.
And he's on board to work with the town to replace it. And as of replacing, not where it is now, at the locations, and now we're moving it next to the palm.
With the sand pipe?
Yes. Yeah, the sand pipe right now is a hundred fifty feet away. It's in a very, not a good place for us to use it, so now we've got to put it down by the.
Well, I think it's something you can read for you.
Yeah, easier for us, easier for them to not damage it as it already done the path, so I think he was more on the, on board, applying, we support that now, wherever close we are. We'll see, so your placeholder is actually doing its thing.
Alright, perfect. And, but the biggest concern was, uh, was the mill.
Yep, and I saw Brian Pellerin, and we had a conversation about it, and he, the one that's there now is his, and he's gonna keep it up, and operationally maintain it. And I told him what our other issues were that we're looking at down the road, maybe install one down by Legion, and one at the upper section, and he was actually open, and it was something that he could do to help.
Okay.
With that, I planted a seed.
Okay.
Hopefully, hopefully that'll germinate, maybe we can throw something in communities' way to help, because, because again, he understands that if anything like that happens, he's the one that hits most benefit out of anybody else.
From all of us, right?
Correct, so I kind of presented it that way, and he kind of goes, yeah, because we need more than yours that's not here, we can utilize your land, we can supply more water, and he got it, so hopefully that'll be. No, I don't either.
I know, you have a plan for it, but I don't.
I don't either, yes, we do, but I, trying to augment, make it so that it's user friendly for everybody.
Watching that mill burning, uh, sand.
Yeah.
Theory enough.
Yeah, I did too, standing in the street.
You were actually there doing it, but I didn't watch the happen, so.
Yeah.
Alright, anything else for the chief?
Thank you, gentlemen.
Okay, very nice.
You too.
Alright, town administrator, city, why don't you come up here and have a seat with us, and we're gonna talk a bit more. So what is the, what is the rectory, what is the rectory like, what is the rectory?
I went online, after speaking, sending emails to the rectory, and getting response from at least one of the chair members, that we had discussed it, and I found a warrant article worded from the D I, D A R.
D R A?
D R, yes, thank you.
Even better.
Um, of how it should go on to the warrant.
Okay. I'll read it, okay.
So, this is here for you, at the bottom, I've put a couple bullet points that I was hoping to get clarification.
Did you read them?
I did.
Okay, so that, my understanding was that this account was going to act to be able to, uh, save anything that they raise, not receive from the town, and the money that they raised to be put into the account after expenses were paid. This is showing that you're looking to have a deposit into that.
So I'm wondering, do we need to have a deposit? I also found two articles which are referenced in the last bullet point, um, from the New Hampshire Municipal Society, uh, Associations, um, Town, New Hampshire Town and City, and this is one of them, I printed out, um, one copy, um, about understanding your recreation revolving fund, and it goes through some basic questions and answers.
You gotta give me a second, let me read them, and then we can, but, uh, see if the town Rollins Road just got a recreation revolving fund pursuant to the statute. The money received from fees and charges for recreation, park services, and facilities, shall be allowed to accumulate from year to year, and shall not be considered a part of the general fund on assigned fund basis. The treasurer shall have custody of all monies in the fund, and shall pay out of the same only upon the order of the Recreation Park Commission, or other board, or body designated by the local legislative board, so there should be some, for, for commission. These funds may be expended only for recreation work in the state of the nation, and no expenditure shall be made in such a way as to require the expenditure of other funds that are not allocated for that purpose, and help them. So, the money received from fees and charges for recreation, park services, and facilities shall be allowed to accumulate. So that would be your.
So this year we were hoping to keep, um, any donations from extra snack sales, parents paid at the beginning of the year for summer rec, what they were gonna pay for the summer, if they ran out of money, they were informed and they paid more. Several families had less than ten dollars left. There were only five to ten families that had over ten dollars, and of those, they were offered a refund or not. Because we do not have this revolving rec fund currently, we have to send everybody on the list a check, because we cannot carry it over here to you. This would solve that problem, this would allow us in the twenty nineteen year, if it's approved by the voters, to take that money as a donation to help offset programming and, um, staff fees if necessary. If you, this article mentions, I believe this article, and maybe the other article, mentions, can you use it to pay for staff? And thirty-five, RSA thirty-five B one says that if the staff is doing a program, then it can help offset the staff costs, but it's more recommended to reduce the fees of the programs, if that makes sense. The, this article does not go. The, this article does not go in depth into it, like the other article mentioned resources. These funds cannot be used for capital projects. So the rec committee could not use this money in the revolving fund to buy land, construct any sort of building or facility. That would have to be through the capital improvement plan and you could create a special fund through that. And then, so my, one of my questions was, we have three hundred dollars in our budget for the twenty nineteen season for, or fiscal year, for senior programming that would offset senior activities. Can that money be part of this Warren article? Is it not to be part of this Warren article? Because that's money raised by taxation.
I don't think that was the purpose of doing this account. What was the purpose of doing historical one? Because you're mimicking with the historical feedback. Wasn't it to be able to maintain what you raised by selling your note cards and instead of turning it back into the town? Isn't that, isn't that the same purpose?
It's to raise funds to help in historical preservation.
And this is.
And we were allowed to, to turn it back. So what the town has, and I think you might be suggesting on the emergency, giving three hundred dollars a year to that committee? That would go into the fund too, to that.
Yeah, I mean, there isn't a line in the fund for Family Day to go put money into an account. All you have is your, your expenses of what you're anticipating that to be. So but you have to raise the revenue to match what your expenses are. So anything over your expenses is going to be able to go into that account. If you're short, see, you see that, it's too hope, because if you're short, the town's going to back you and it's going to pick up the difference. But you're over, you don't want to give it to the town. You want to create this account so you have a buffer zone for next year.
Right.
So I don't know if, if we should be putting money in from the budget into this account. Because I think it kind of sounds like a double dipping kind of a situation. Especially if you don't make your, if you don't make your expenses higher than what your revenue is. And then you put money away, that doesn't make sense to me. So that's my.
So my, so like in the twenty eighteen fiscal year?
Can't, I don't think you can put that. I don't think you can put general fund. The money received from fees and charges for recreational services shall be allowed to accumulate from year to year and shall not be considered a part of the general fund on assigned fund balance. This is the second sentence.
Yeah.
The money received from fees and charges for park services and recreation should be about to come in community and shall not be considered a part of the general fund on assigned balance. What you're saying is, what you get in for tuition after invoice is paid.
Would be your carrier or not.
That's, that's.
Right.
Yeah, so, but you can't put it in there and not use it towards the program. So I'm not sure that that is.
So that's why you would, the select board would have custody of, of a disbursement in the form of, saying, when they were disbursement, the treasurer.
Well, we're going to do the same thing we're going to do is Caroline's going to receive the cash that you receive for your tuition. She's going to pay the bills that you turned in and then if there's a difference, that money can go in here.
So it wouldn't, it wouldn't be Caroline, it would be the treasurer?
No, Caroline pays the bills, not the treasurer. Caroline processes the invoices and puts them in to get paid and prints the checks.
What this, what this rec revolving fund says, the money received from fees and charges for recreation and park services shall be allowed to accumulate. It should be deposited into this fund and paid out of this fund.
No.
That way, well, that's what, that's what.
I don't think that, well, who's going to, so who's going to fund it if you don't make enough?
I can ask.
Well, well, I can, the town of Ransford is, so if the town of Ransford is, the town of Ransford has to receive the revenue and has to pay the bills. And then if there is a, anything left over, then it moves into that fund. Isn't that what they're doing with the Historical Society? They paid your invoices, you give them the deposit and if there's anything different, you, you get that moved to your account or your, isn't that what they're doing now? It should be the same.
And that, so the authorizing statute may be different, I think it sounded very different for, for rec revolving fund versus for historical.
So.
There are a lot of consistency in states, actually, it is so.
The states, I noted it on the bottom here, that the RSA, the government's recreation programs is NH RSA thirty five dash B. And there are seven or eight points in that RSA that discuss that.
So if they're saying that you have to put the money in this, this revolving fund and pay the bills out of it? They're saying that in this RSA?
This is directly from Department of Revenue Administration.
It's allowed to be used for that. So, so here's the enacting, but I haven't read the enacting statute, that's setting all this up. So this is, this is just the DRA's boilerplate language. If you want to set one up for your town, this is what you should be using. When you read the description from the municipal associations, that they can be used to do those things. But doesn't mean that you have to put all the money in for, for summer rec, wherever you put it, like seventy thousand dollars.
What do you take in?
Directly into the, this fund and then funnel back out.
Right.
It's just saying, if there are fees received, you can put them in and it's non lapse. So if there's money left over at the end of the year, if we want to start saving to offset next year's recreational activity in the town, you will be able to do that. If not, it just goes back to the general fund and offset that to the expense of some of that.
So my, my next question for the board, and I don't know if you can answer this. Is it based on our individual line items that reflect different programs? Or is it for the bottom line reflection?
Ask another question, I understand.
Okay, so is it for individual program, say?
What, yeah, do we lose the fund?
The fund, so if the fund, if we make money from team camp, but lose money in Camp Raleigh.
Yeah.
Is it the board's decision or the rec committee's decision or someone else's decision to how that money is spent?
Your, your line in the budget is recreation, but it's a, as a single line recreation, it's always been netted. So you can't have it both ways. You can't, if you make, if you make a profit on team and you lose money on Camp Raleigh, you have to offset each other. That's what we did last year. I mean, that's what, that's the intention, this recreation is one large budget consisting of several different sub budgets. You did, you presented a team budget, you presented a Camp Raleigh budget, but in the bottom of the whole thing, it's recreation.
We strive and we revenue.
I'm sorry?
We want us to revenue.
Well, yeah, but it's one budget, so you can't take the money on, on team and make a profit or vice versa.
They both have to make a profit for us to.
No, the end result has to be a profit. If you had two thousand dollar profit on team and you were short a thousand, you've gained a thousand dollars.
We could put that in.
And we can put that in there. But if, you know, if, if you have two thousand profit in team and you lose five thousand in Raleigh, you get nothing because you have to net them and you're still down, which the town picks it up. So you, do you understand what I'm saying?
Yeah.
You can't have it both ways, yeah.
This Warren, this, this enacting, this, this revolving fund. Makes a lot of sense.
Oh, absolutely.
In the sense, if, if we're going to, if we run in the black and we want to save money for the next year so we can offset the cost, so we don't have to take more on taxation, it makes a lot of sense. You folks just need to understand that. If, just because you make, let's say it costs seventy thousand dollars on a rec. And just what the meeting said, if you make two thousand dollars more on young kids and lose a thousand, a thousand dollars on the older kids, it's only a thousand dollars. Or if you lose two and three thousand on both wars, right, a lot, but nothing goes in, so long as people understand that. And it's only if, only if, so we need to figure out who, who was the person that has. Who has the authority, who has the. Just want to take money out of it. Who has the.
Well, the treasurer has control of the funds.
Yeah, but we have.
But who authorizes the treasurer to write the checks?
Well, who authorizes it now?
Who, who has?
The select board does via the rec committee. The rec committee makes the request.
Right, right. Caroline, yeah. I mean, she's the point of contact. She receives the cash, she receives the invoices.
We're among the board agents.
Okay.
It's a good one, but they sell.
So she would come to us if there was a problem and that needed to be addressed, if funds removed from this account, if there was accounts, but.
So the treasurer shall have custody of all monies in the fund and shall pay out the same only upon order of the Recreation or Park Commission or other board or body designated by the local legislative body. No further legislative body rules required. So we would want that to say, the treasurer shall have, but we would want a customized. The treasurer shall have, have custody of all monies in the fund and shall pay out the same only upon order of the select.
Now, does the treasurer have the authorization in all trust funds?
No.
Oh, revolving, is it to have?
It's because, I think it's because.
Because it's a revolving fund?
That's what.
What is the Historical Society? Is that a revolving or a trust?
A trust.
It's a trust. So why are you going revolving this is trust?
That's what I'm just saying, for a lot of them.
Only for rec, it's only revolving?
That's what I'm saying, there's no consistency.
Okay, all right.
We can only, they can only, we as a collective can only do what they, what they tell us to do, so. Unless there's another one, so that you guys didn't see, but you got this from the DRA, right? So they would have put them both there to get, they don't.
Yeah. And some communities cap this. I don't know if you had wanted to think about capping it, so that it doesn't get too large.
I do think it's going to get you. But just maybe, maybe we do.
We will just have more opportunity to offer more programs. I mean, that's the bottom line.
More to offset these programs, uh, through direct taxation.
So I'm assuming, if I understand this correctly, if after the program, after summer rec is over and you do a fundraiser in the winter, the money, the profit for that fundraiser in the winter can go in this revolving fund. Is that right?
If we have broken even from the camp.
Wait, wait, another bit? Okay, so we're mixing two things.
Ask that question again.
Okay, because once camp is over and all the money's turned in and all of the things for summer rec is over, if you did something in December or January and you had a fundraiser for, for another opportunity, that shouldn't affect the summer rec program. This is distinctly a fundraiser for a particular issue. It has nothing to do with the summer rec program. Okay. If you, I mean, the idea is to have some opportunities to do some fundraising.
So the rec committee wants to raise money, go into the revolving fund.
But if, she was saying, I think she's mixing it up with what I was saying. What I'm saying is from July to August, all the money that you spend and receive for that program in July and August has to get paid by your revenue.
Yeah.
And if there's anything left, it can go in this revolving fund.
That's correct.
But if there isn't, you can't get anything else within the budget. However, you shouldn't have a problem fundraising for another type of program and have that affect what summer rec did for you. Do you see where I'm going with this?
So if summer rec.
Oh, no, no.
Oh, okay. So if summer rec.
Is said and done.
Is said and done and did not have a deficit, we can.
Or had a deficit.
Or had a deficit.
Okay, that is summer rec. But if you did something in December or January and something trying to raise funds for another purpose other than the summer rec program.
So like winter rec.
Recreation.
Like winter rec or some of your programs.
Right, right.
Then could those funds, you're saying those funds could go in this fund?
That would be my understanding because it's not the summer rec program.
So that leads me to my next question. At the end of twenty eighteen, there was money locked in the winter rec budget that was not used. This, in the twenty eighteen season, that went into the general fund. But if we do, if we have money left over in twenty nineteen like we did in twenty eighteen, would that go into the revolving fund if passed?
It's for monies received for fees and charges.
That's it.
Yeah.
No, it's it. Even fundraisers, I don't think you can.
Yeah, fundraiser, I think that's tricky, I don't know.
Really?
Yeah, I don't think you can. That's why I'm looking at the enacting law.
Well, that's, that's unfortunate because that's the only way that they're going to be able to raise money.
A wonderful place to.
So the, I believe the second article that I did not print has some of those special clauses and it reminded me of, like, if anybody's went to the Deerfield Fair. That, I believe the Deerfield Fair grounds are municipal holding or state holding and the Deerfield community rents it from the state. They can charge fees and put them in a special account. I don't know if it's this account or another account, that's explained in the article. They can charge admission and set up a special account where that, those fees would go to pay for maintenance and repairs to buildings that are already established. So like if one of the Deerfield Fair buildings needed a sprinkler system, they could charge admission to the Deerfield Fairgrounds and set that money aside in a special account just for the purpose of putting in a sprinkler system. If that makes sense.
So that's the special, you have to set up special funds, different types of funds for different types of purposes.
That is my understanding.
So, because that example is, to me is not like, when we, when we were talking about having a winter carnival or doing something, you know, some other activities to raise funds to help offset or, or to increase our programs, you have to make sure that you can put that money in there after, after, not summer, not summer rec, because that's funded by town if you don't make your money.
Basically, it can accomplish what you're going to do.
Yeah.
It's going to accomplish part of putting one.
Yeah.
So my question is, for senior program, we're sending out a survey in the next couple of days.
Yeah.
Asking people what they want. One of the options is meals and exercise programs. If we decide that we want to have a meal and we charge our seniors three dollars for the meal to help offset it. And then we end up making a profit on it throughout the year. Does though, that profit that we make on the senior meals go into this account?
I would say yes, because it's, it's different. It's, it's different than summer rec. It's.
Well, I mean, so.
Because the town is not paying anything towards it.
We don't want to get hung up on, on just summer rec, it's a recreation revolving fund for your rec, all your recreational activities in the town.
But the difference is, the summer rec is supported by the town if you fail to meet the full amount of the expenses.
Right.
But the others are not.
Question is, if they set up a lunch somewhere, a non existent community center. Sorry, not, not going to do that. So let's say we do at the fire station. You know, they, they, like they do their pancake breakfast, they want a host stand for it. And you charge through classes also, whatever spaghetti dinner or lunch, to help defray costs. After you paid out all your bills and there's money left over, if this were to, I mean, existence, that money could be deposited into this fund to help offset the next one if you want to do, or whatever activities in, in recreation. But currently, if there's money left over, which is going to the general fund, we spend it.
And I believe there's a line item in the budget for senior programming for three hundred dollars to get us started on that.
If the idea is.
But I don't think you can move that to this fund.
Exactly.
If that's what your question is.
It's only from fees and charges.
So that, my understanding is, is that three hundred dollars would get us started, be able to provide, say we're doing a meal, provide the initial food that we need to purchase for the meal.
Yes.
And then the three dollars per person reimburses us and then at the end of the year, if there's a profit based on our, that everything goes in there.
If you made sixty bucks off this lunch, um, it would go into this fund.
Well, I don't know, would it? Because town, town funded the three hundred dollars, just like, just like summer rec. Do you have to pay back your three hundred and anything over the three hundred go into the fund? Do you have to pay back your three hundred and anything? Over the three hundred go into the fund?
That's why I'm asking.
I would think that you would have to reimburse the town any contributions the town makes to anything to do with recreation, to...
My understanding when we started, it was just summer rec that had to be level funded interest.
That's, that's true. You're absolutely, because we, we get, Fiona Fonde gets it done, it's considered their town's donation to fireworks. So, and it has been for years. So maybe, maybe the senior, uh, program is different. It's not, the expectation is not to become level funded for senior programming, only for summer rec.
It could be though.
It could, it could be, it could be.
But I mean, we're talking, if you're talking three hundred dollars versus seventy thousand, I mean, there's obviously...
But I don't think that, you know, I don't think that they would hold it be anything in the recreation by the county, but I don't think that was the intent. Especially if it's a family that is in fireworks.
It was, well, and it's just a, a poor policy request of the rec department, the rec folks. There's no written policy that says you have to do that. I mean, I can't imagine you would have a program the next year if you refuse to do it. I mean, so, and you all want that, use that. You do a very good job of trying, but you don't have it.
And I think we would, um, some of the voters would be very frustrated if we did not attempt.
Right, of course.
Well, also you're utilizing the town staff to do your bookkeeping for you, where the other, like senior rec, um, the senior one and, and anything else, you're not using the staff to do. I mean, Caroline put a lot of hours into the summer rec program, but would pay and, and pay all of the bills and stuff, which I would assume you wouldn't have that level of bookkeeping services required from that office for the, for senior. You know, it's just not enough. So I would, I would say that that one probably isn't the same time as the summer rec.
Uh, well, okay. This makes a lot of sense, how we're talking. I mean, so here's the question. Last, just last year, we did the historical one.
Twenty eighteen.
There wasn't an appropriation, there wasn't appropriation type of, they were transferring existing funds into that fund, so it had to go to the budget. So, this doesn't have any money attached. This is saying, giving license to put money in eventually, but there is money that's, so I think that the actual warrant said transfer existing whatever.
It was three hundred and some, three hundred and fifty dollars or so.
Um, and that's probably why it had to go. This doesn't have any money attached. I wonder if they bring this up is because, you know, right? So, we, so the, the warrant has to be, the warrant has to be finalized on the twenty eighth. This would, one might be required, I don't know. So, if it's, if it's brought up by the select, if it's by a petition, it doesn't require it. With the, the only exception, I think, with petition where our, was the S P two required, I don't know, public hearing, I just looked at the statute, it wasn't saying, so. So this is the problem we face. I don't know if we have time to put this on the bill as a select. I'm not saying I don't want to do it.
We haven't done any warrants yet.
But he's saying we might have to have a public hearing for it, and when do we schedule?
Well, I will, we have all of them on a public hearing.
We got all the other warrant that we're suggesting, have, have, or will have through zoning, the departments that they have to do in the following, uh, the hosting of public hearings on that. They have those, or C F P, we've already, and that will be, the public hearing is on Saturday.
But the, the nuisance word that's, that's on, uh, the busy night on the floor.
And I don't think we have time to have a notice brought to it.
This notice? You'd have to notice every warrant? Or you're having a public, well, you're having a public hearing anyway, why can't you take it back with the others?
We've already sent that notice out.
And you listed them?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
I, when I was...
Well, they were in the paper, actually.
When I was researching this, the town of Durham, I believe, was, one of the towns who has gone through this.
Yeah.
And I did not have a chance to thoroughly read it.
Uh-huh.
So I don't know, they might have some guidance in whether or not they had a public hearing to this one.
They had a public hearing on the, um, historical. He can't last at all, maybe two minutes, no one asked him questions. I was, I did have three people on the other side, I don't see much, so.
Can...
I don't recall a big bar burner, but...
If the select board goes through with this, do we have time to notice it for the twenty first, which is the weekend of Martin Luther King's birthday, like, six?
That's the night we're finalizing the warrant, so we probably can. That's what folks want to do. So...
That's a suggestion?
Well, the other group is, if I petition...
Five people assigned tomorrow, try to take them to...
Yeah, because that's for the eighth, right? The deadline, petition mark, tomorrow.
Also, so, the treasurer shall have custody of the funds, only upon the board or the select. What other body does it mean by, what's the other body?
So take out participations and leave-in or other body doesn't?
No, it's just that, designated by the, um, by order of the select, period.
Okay. And should no further action legislative body be moved to?
Nope, that's your stay, I'm sorry. No, take that period. Leave-in, leave-in the no further legislative body, not member. Uh, these funds may be only expanded if the recreation partners are staying, now the rest stays the same. That would be, now, it's not going to be as few as you do it by, twenty five people in one. That would be the easiest way to do it. But if not, then if the board wants to give a sponsor, but we can, we can probably notice it, handle that.
Does it end the day tomorrow, or is it end of?
By five o'clock.
By five o'clock. Who do I turn it into at five o'clock? Is the Kate?
She's not gonna be there. Kate's hours are nine to one tomorrow.
If it's the last date, though, for some...
Yeah, it's supposed to stay open until five o'clock on the last date, so submit petition one, I believe. So, do we want to send this forward, then, or, or act on it for the tomorrow, or the twenty first, or the public hearing on the twenty first?
And the rec?
No, we're asking the board, we want to do that.
No, I think that's, um, yeah, if, if we can get it noticed, I mean, like you said, it would jump very strongly. It's going to be hours on public hearing, but we should...
Okay.
Okay, we'll do that. You don't have to worry. Okay, so we'll have...
Public hearing.
Public hearing.
Um, one twenty one, nineteen, at sixteen?
It's a holiday that day, are you working on that? You know, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not working on that day. I really don't work, I don't work. Very early on, so.
What do you need by probably? Yeah, I'm okay with that.
Yeah. If we have, if we're coming by five, we might have to be home by seven in the morning, so.
Really, good, I'm good.
Great, so.
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine. We just have to make sure that we're not comparing anybody who is in the working field, just telling you before then. I wouldn't know any earlier than five.
No, I wouldn't, so, you can, can you make it work?
Sure.
And I might have to be home in time, but...
So, so this is what, so it's the night first?
Five o'clock, stop for a second. Are you there, or twenty minutes? Yeah, I'm, oh, sorry, I was going past you, that's very much. I'm about to articulate myself, I'm, I'm, I'm being a common person for some, can you be over five? Because we're gonna just, we're gonna, we're gonna notice the public hearing for five o'clock, and then start the following public hearing.
How are you doing?
Like five fifteen.
Okay, Chris, it's like, what are we doing?
And then just get into it and get it done. It's gonna be an abbreviated agenda, it's not gonna be a full agenda. There's gonna be a deal with the warrants.
Okay.
It's a holiday, not just a, you know, holidays.
Okay.
Public hearing and the warrant, unless one of the chiefs or a board agent did an emergency, totally gonna take care of the business.
All right, so five, five P M on twenty first for a public hearing, then following immediately afterwards, select board meeting?
Yes.
Okay. And thank you very much. I was just thinking, a couple of our committee members are out of town, if there's some, I don't know.
No, it, it is a, truly, if this passes, could be very beneficial to the town, because we could be saving money and offsetting for the next year. It's not, um, it's not, it's not, um, it's not a way to divert general funds, so, so, I think it'll be fine. So, just put them in a public hearing.
And the rec committee will meet next week anyways, this will be on the fifteenth of January.
The rec, revolving, oh, amazing, revolving.
What time? I'm looking, I'm just, I believe it's six. We said it at eleven fifteen. Uh, six P M, that's in January fifteen, at six P M down low. Make sure you get it close enough, because it will be posted tomorrow.
So, that's in my calendar, um, select board meeting. Oh, do you wanna, oh, or...
No, no, the rec meeting. Well, if you're getting help, then I, oh, I will, I should be there. We can push it back a few. Or we can change the location to go over there.
All right, everyone has it on their calendar, then, all right, so we're gonna do that for, for, I think you're doing it.
Um, I also wanted to let you know that the senior manning is currently at the printers, at the printers. And I've talked with Caroline, Caroline, and it needs to be done in next week to make sure that it goes in to twenty, to which is where that went through, and I have a copy of it, if anybody wanted to see it.
Did you save the money that went through?
Um, we did not necessarily save any money. She's going to stay within the Staples, um, P O, but she was able to upgrade us on the paper. So instead of being black type on white paper, she's made it, um, key line printing, so it'll stand out, and then people will actually see that you have access.
Hard to miss that color.
And here's another copy of that, understanding your form of law, if anybody applied a copy.
A lot of people on the wall, I can have scan and put it on again. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Alrighty, final, so that brings us to the next part of this. Finalizing the warrant, it's gonna be at the one twenty one meeting, now starting at five fifteen probably. I don't know, plus fifteen minutes for that hearing. Um, excuse me, the budget hearing is scheduled for the twelfth, which is coming Saturday. I have been working on the, um, um, select board's PowerPoint presentation for that. Um, I need to do, add a few more things in. I hope we'll have it due by, to mid-afternoon, maybe close a bit, so you can take a look at it, especially to you, because you're gonna be, but at the grade school, at the grade school, and not any. So, which leads me to the next thing. You're asking that, um, we need to send out a notice of that meeting, uh, via the town, well, the, the budget committee has sent out a, to be the, the town, um, email service, but I think we should be sending one out too, for the notice of that meeting, when the filing period is, and when there's a little session, so. And I was going to say, it was going to be on the tenth. The, um, the last date is similar, um, the warrant, which is tomorrow, and that cracked up on me. I thought it would be next week, so. I only realized it when I saw the school stamp, head add, so it seemed like, I didn't think the date was right, and I checked it, and I was, so. Doesn't even get a filter. All right, so, um, I don't have, I sent out tomorrow, was it, okay. Okay, budget committee secretary posting, I am told that we still don't have one. Uh, did see there was an email, it went out again tonight, requesting folks to come forward, and we have time, we will be compensated. Hopefully, we'll hear from someone. Uh, town administrator position. Think, seeing one of these folders in the left, I asked to print it out, it's probably in the left. Given last week's, last Thursday's meeting, um, it became very clear to me is that there needs to be one person who is the repository of information, coordinating efforts between departments, and, so that says the department, this one, between this board, police department, fire department, all the departments. And, I mean, and the admin committee, that doesn't seem like it, not everything seemed to, to, to mesh last week. And there are deadlines that are rapidly approaching, um, that we could administer. So, I am proposing that we appoint Caroline as our, our town administrator, starting, was it, it's happening today? With the, uh, I'm just saying that she'll be paid on, for almost forty hours per week, budgeted, um, your current equivalent, the equivalent of your current hourly, hourly wage will continue to be paid as a salary based on forty hours per week until the budget is approved by the voters or until such time as the select board otherwise reallocates the funding for this purpose. So that is to say that she's not going to be paid the, um, the amount of money, um, that this budget, it'll be the current salary. Uh, and that will be a, uh, the current job description is comprehensive and demands more of your time than one person can do without additional staff. The select board acknowledges this and that there are times of the year when the duties described in the job description demand more than forty hours per week. Intent of the board is, in offering this position to you, is that you will manage the most critical functions within approximately forty hours per week until such time as the budget funding and support staff is passive. Anticipate that there will be functions within the job description which will likely, which will likely not be fulfilled. Uh, the select board is aware of the deficiency and holds you harmless, as we neither expect nor demand that you will fulfill all functions prior to the hiring of any or sufficient support staff. In this sentence, the select board shall review the line in the job description, within the context of the level of support staff. Six months from the date of this letter, it shall make adjustments to the job description and to our salary as the appropriate, we're qualified for the parts. I think, what I witnessed last week, I don't want to go through again, but we asked someone who was in effect, doing this job permanently and should have that type. Now, it'll be up to the voters, of course, to decide whether or not that position will be funded in the end, and if it's not, then we will have to, we will have to make, have a decision in March, but, I think in all fairness, as a person who's been lost in this position, which asked for it or not, I think we should be offering this to them. So what I would like, then, is a motion appointing, no, she's got that to accept, so, or these conditions, so this is what I would suggest. Um, that we have a motion appointing Caroline Kendall as the temporary town administrator for the town of Rome's, for... That's her today. What were the conditions outlined given?
Um, the motion?
I'll second. Any other discussion? Um, we all want to talk.
Allison?
I feel like we've talked this up, um, I wholeheartedly agree. It's time she's doing, performing the work.
Okay. And then if there's another discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. And deliver this to her. All right. And so, with that, she'll be attending, if she accepts it, she should be attending the committee meeting on 12th Tuesday, Tuesday, and we staff in the... The manner we appointing that on the street on Saturday, uh, the hearing on Saturday. It'll soon be coming to the agreement. But anyways.
Need a seminar conference?
Certainly. Okay. Stormwater Committee meeting. Paul Kuzalt has been attending, I have people, he's a, he's a, he's a manager. He has been attending the Stormwater Coalition meetings for us, and it's fine doing that, but he would like us to call a meeting of the Stormwater Committee that we've established in town, the advisory committee. We have not appointed, we, I don't believe, new members of that advisory committee. So, it was Mr. Kuzalt. Suzanne had offered to stay on it. I don't know if she's still interested. And my point that we could also engineer was on that committee previously. I would be interested in a motion to, um, to reappoint those three people and they don't want to do it. I know Paul wants to do it. Basically, he wants to, that's been set up because there are, um, there are opportunities, I guess, that, um, through the Stormwater Coalition, that we could be taking advantage of, but the committee needs to do some work, I guess, take advantage of this, in my understanding. That's why he'd like to call them back together.
So, was Suzanne on it because she was a delegate from the board of selectmen, or was she just on it as a resident?
She wasn't an official. She was on it because she was interested in it and it had to do with the work that she was engaged in as a board member.
Okay, so it doesn't require a board member?
Doesn't happen.
I'm happy to attend, physically.
But we can appoint, as England, as our appoint if you'd like to. I don't rec... I don't believe it was solely because she was a board member. I think that was probably half of it. I think it was also because she was also an resident.
Okay.
So...
Okay.
I have one step far away with that.
You don't wanna try Russell for it?
No.
So, we'll move to appoint, ask you where... I put one. I gotta try Russell. Paul. Z... A U L T, maybe?
That's what I think it is.
Close enough.
Yes.
And that ex officio. Say, my... Okay. Is there a second for that? I'll make a motion. Out of the question, unless you're calling. Is there a second? You gonna second that?
I'll second it.
All right. We've already volunteered for a mile, so that doesn't matter. Any, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. I will let, um, let him know those folks have been appointed and hopefully they still want to do it. Faults to review. I put welfare on there because of a discussion we had, um, last week. The week before that, I recently... So, we wanted to review the, um, yeah, we should, um, the comment from the secretary. That's what it did.
Allison has a master's in...
You're already worth a monkey. Collie, the C. Kind of E.
It's my neck.
It's your neck? Your neck of what? Your C. Oh, the cursive, all right. It is lovely. So, Allison Collie is a hydrologist, right? Don't she does for living?
I don't know if she does it for a living, but she has a master's in hydrology. You need to use her.
Maybe she might be willing to do it too.
And make out too.
Well, we can ask her, okay? We can appoint her afterward, but these folks were on it previously, so I don't wanna disappoint Allison if she doesn't want to do it, but she might.
Isn't she the one that's on the Stormwater? She's the treasurer?
Oh, is she?
Yes. Yes.
Oh, all right, so maybe not.
I mean, you can ask her for sure.
Mike was on it when he was a commissioner, so maybe, we can ask her. I'll, um, I'll maybe... We got, she got, she does, um...
She's the treasurer.
Is she?
The treasurer?
Yes.
Yeah.
Faults to review. So, I just put welfare on this, because we can review the policy after we're done. All right, Town Administration, Board Member Activities. Denise, what do you have going on this week?
I have budget and a public hearing and...
That's it. Planning board tomorrow night.
Anything big coming on the agenda?
Um, we're having a public hearing to address the zoning grievances. The zoning grievances, um, no, I don't, well, it's...
We don't need to.
It's their public hearing.
Right, right, right. I didn't know they have a lawyer board reps.
Yeah. And then, um, yeah, we're just, the public hearing, the talks.
So, the only thing that I've, um, I have, I have a public hearing on as well, and working on the PowerPoint.
Yep.
Jump back up just for a second, I'm sorry. So then, under A, 4A, Roman III, where it's noted to be the filing period, also starting to work on the, um, sort of the very, 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 not very, very rough outline of what voters got, just putting it together based on warrant or numbers. I don't know, I don't even have the numbers, I just... God, I don't know what, you know, I'm just starting in the framework of what it looks basically like. Putting out the, just, I'm working on that.
What is the...
I'm sorry, go ahead.
What's the, we got, what's the timeframe we get that, that gets mailed to you?
That will be mailed out before the deliberative session, which is... Uh, no, no, sorry, 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 sorry.
Before the election?
The act of the election. Uh, so, before March 12th, isn't that the... Maybe some people hope I got it wrong. I showed that.
March 12th?
March 12th, how about that? So, before March 12th. I would say...
The deliberative session is February 2nd?
Yes. The 9th?
The 9th.
The schools is the 2nd. We went first, or ours is the 2nd and our backup is the 2nd?
I think they're on Tuesday night.
Yes. They're the 5th. So, ours, it's Groundhog Day. There's irony there. So, it's February 2nd at 9:00 AM for the grade school. And then our fallback date in case it snows. That was the 9th.
Obviously, the 9th.
Nope, we had to move it, remember, because it's Wednesday the 6th. Uh, that was, we were originally the 5th.
Yeah.
And then the school, that I forgot about.
The schools, yeah.
So, their backup date is the 9th. It's a tight schedule, so it's, they're used to it, I think, by now, or should be. Army and staff or the S A U office, it keeps them in mind, so, you know.
Yeah, exactly.
Or at least we can just drag it down. So, we're learning. Steep learning curve this time, but we're trying.
So, who writes the selectmen's, um, notice in the annual report?
Well, I think I'm gonna have to do it, but, um, it can be done by committee.
No, I just wanna, I...
I think I'll...
I certainly can help with it too.
That'd be awesome. Yeah.
The other thing is, um, who and when do you make a decision that who is gonna be dedicated to this year?
I've already decided in my mind, but I want to talk to you all about it. We haven't gotten to that point yet. I thought it would be appropriate to dedicate to Joe.
But we have two selectmen that have to dedicate to Joe and Mr. James. Can we do two?
Certainly.
Well, did some services, like, it's setting in as a bid, but I have this hour. It's Joe. It's setting in as a bid, but he was a selectman, but he certainly has served many capacities for many, many, many years, so, I mean, I don't know what you, what the, um, procedure is in choosing.
We can certainly dedicate to both.
Both that have been outstanding.
Oh, for sure.
Very hard work.
Not a slide, the message will change. So, that, um... So, the town clerk prepares the, um, the town report along with the select board. We have a service statutory responsibility. She has service statutory responsibility, which is, of course, so, I'm not sure. I think it's our responsibility for, I'll check. Or it may just be silent, you just always have the board, you just have the town. No, no, I think it's appro... No, 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 I think it's very appropriate.
I think...
Can.
You'll know. Only you haven't read that.
No, I just sit backwards, A comes before the U.
Yeah.
Uh, the reason that you're Latin. Every letter is actually pronounced. There's no, uh, no clue. Okay. The only permit. I want to go to other activities we wanna talk about. Go, sir. Yes, sir. Come on, go on.
Okay, permit number 2018113 for a bath addition, new boiler, LP gas, um, on Rollinsburg. 175 is the P and it's been signed by Tom Clark.
2018-113, good to go. So, we're gonna grant it?
And what number, Rollins?
620.
6?
20. Let's page backward. This year, we're gonna tell next year, but this is already on the...
All right, we have a purchase order 1579, IDS, from the town clerk for 600 dog licenses for $236. That's the invoice behind us.
Copy of the register. Okay. Second?
I'll second.
All right, purchase order 1579 has been moved and seconded for dog licenses for $236. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, for those.
Take four of those now.
Four.
Oh, small.
Fully, fully. Hope they're small.
Yeah, actually, I do want to...
I have a petition warrant article here for the residence tax.
All righty.
Shall we rescind the provision of RSA 72:1-C, which authorizes any town or city to elect not to access levy and collect a residence tax? If the majority of these, those voting on the appropriation vote yes, RSA 72:1-C shall apply within the city and town on April 1st, following the approval of the question. And they have, they have, I have to say, 28 signatures, and they're saying they're all current residents and registered voters.
All right, so the petition warrant article has been certified by the town clerk, that all of these folks are current residents and registered voters. Now, there you have it. So, there is, you recall that the tax collector was hoping that we would be able to do this, but we cannot. Has to be done by the petition. Apparently, some of those aren't. So, there you have it. So, we will... We don't do anything, but we will... We have acknowledged it. We will include it on the warrant, there's sticky note. No, I don't have a place.
Oh, sorry, can I give you another one?
Sorry, this question, person wasn't there, I'm sorry. I intentionally, it's on camera, I didn't do it intentionally. Just run the line for my notes, because I need another sticky note.
Next time, I'll give you that whole tab.
Received. So, we don't get to include on the warrant when we finalize the warrant. Can I make that as well?
It's all I have.
All right.
From the correspondence holder, we have a letter from the Rollinsburg Water and Sewer District, implying it has a 12% rate increase from the storm cycle due to changes we're facing with our aging infrastructure, complex treatment processes, staff, and overall potential protection on and on.
12%?
12%.
Toby's at 12, we're not 20. Okay, no. To the fairer rate.
That's what I hide on this, one of the people. The thing that talks a little struggling to meet EPA standards.
So, this must be, this is under the old, right?
That's what. So, it's 12%. It was on the, on the fourth quarter.
Hang on, let me tell you what they, what we budgeted for. We should increase that if, before we need a budget to leave again. Okay, so sewer, 260 a year of town hall.
That's the, that's the, um...
So, it's 145, so that's, oh, that's, that's the increase. We have 260. I'm sorry. Sorry. 520.
For the year.
For the year.
So, this has, yeah, 560?
Yep. Five, sewer only. And then the water is for the town hall, 350 for the year. Also, 400.
So, let me just do some math that I can't do right. Let me pull up my handy bandy cap. Do we have it broken up by water and by sewer separately in the town?
This is the budget, yeah.
It's not just altogether, right?
No, sewer town, water town, but we should increase all of these lines before Wednesday meeting.
What do we have budgeted for water at the moment, town?
For the town, for water, 350. We never funded it.
It's gonna grow at $52 over the year, just for water, so, that...
Yeah, but that's gonna go, does it say it's gonna go up again?
It does not say.
It said, they said to budget 40% is what they told me.
Well, and this is actually, as I admit, it's not exactly clear. So, find your water, sewer, the fourth quarter, re-implemented the 12% increase from our last billion cycle. Is that in there or is it...
I don't know what the, I can tell you that as a residential customer, um, I paid more than this per quarter for both of these things. It was 260 or 250 something, so...
But you might have had more usage than the town hall.
I never made it to our minimum.
You even own them?
Never. We never made it to the minimum, ever. It's close.
But what they're saying is it should have gone up, it should go up 40%, so...
So, it was more than that?
I think it's gonna probably be higher next bill.
So, that's why I'm saying, I'm not saying it's to bemoan what I had to pay. I'm just thinking it's gonna be a lot more.
So, what's 40% of 520?
One more time?
520, 12%.
Yeah, 208 dollars.
We should increase it by 208 dollars then, for sewer for town hall, and then water, 350, and what's 40%?
So, we're talking less than $1,000 a year.
Okay, but, but you're gonna have to pay it, so you're gonna have...
Okay, but you're gonna have to pay it, so you're gonna have to take it from something else. So, you don't want to increase it.
I think, well, I think that you'll be okay with that, to be honest. I don't think that's... I think for next year, when the budget is being prepared, the actuals should be included. But I think at this stage, I don't think you need to go back to them and ask. I mean, you could bring it up. I don't, I don't...
I can't bring it up unless you approve it. I can't tell them to increase it unless a board approves the increase.
I think that there's probably enough room in the existing budget that we probably could absorb. I would hope, but if you don't feel comfortable doing that...
So, we're talking 208 on sewer and 100 and something on...
For each water. Highway, highway, town, and fire.
So, let's think about that. So, what is, let's go back and look at that. You know what's hilarious? I bring in an schlot to this town report every week, in and out of that one. And the one week I don't bring it in, I've needed it at least six times, I don't know.
Okay, so town hall, the garage, fire station, and the transfer station all have the same dollar amount, 350.
So, 350 times, what was that, four?
Yes.
Times point four, that's $560. So, 560, that's for...
And then sewer is the only, town hall's the only one, and that's 520.
That's 208. So, we're looking at 560, you're looking at $768. So, I think we've... I'm preparing the PowerPoint right now. And I think there are some substantial, especially if you go on insurance, staggering number. So many other increases that I think that we're just going to have to find this 700, maybe 800 dollars, somewhere. Is what I would prefer, but if you want, if you want, if you feel more comfortable going to the budget committee and saying, look, at least having the conversation, I'm fine with that. Authorizing you to ask them to revise the budget by, that's close to 780 dollars.
768.
768. But that's what you'd like to do, admit they were...
I already talked to the budget committee that I would bring it to the board, but if you don't want to increase it, that's fine.
So, are they expecting it then?
I already discussed it with them when sewer and water presented their budget. That it's like, the budget is not correct based, because nobody knew how much it was gonna go up.
Okay, so...
And we still don't. They're saying 40% now. It depends what happens from now until next, the year. It could go up even more based on, they don't know. That's the problem.
How do you say, I mean, they don't know?
Well, they're just randomly going with 40% right now. They don't know what it's gonna actually cost.
And they can adjust the rate every quarter?
I don't know.
They have the right.
Okay, then, all right. So, I would say it might be wise to go and ask the budget committee for an additional $800 or $768 to offset what we know now to be the reality.
Which is the 40%. Because they, at the meeting, which was what, two weeks ago? Two weeks ago, I asked them what the new rates were gonna be, and they didn't know. He said, we're telling you, please, it's about 40%. And that's residents and business. I mean, it's... So, do you think we can do all of it, or do you want to...
I personally want to go with about $416 a year. That's wow, that's what you get for not changing your rates at all in 10 years.
Right.
That's not good. Take it all at once, I mean, I'd have to do it all at once. All right, so, who wants to make the motion?
I'll make the motion, if you think we should. I think we should, I think we should go incorrectly.
And if they don't, they don't, they don't have to agree, I mean, that's fine.
That's right. All right, I'll make a motion to increase the sewer and water lines in the budget, in the town budget by 40%, which is a total of 780?
68.
68, 768.
A second thought. So, the motion is to ask that the town's water and sewer lines in the budget be increased to reflect a total of $768. And then you'll break it out with that.
Yep, well, Caroline will do it tomorrow, so we have the new numbers to the...
Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? About speed.
All right.
What other good news do you have left for us?
We have our tobacco-free policy.
Oh, yeah.
That I think has had rewarding change. Town Rollins for both system employees who want to quit smoking by helping them access tobacco cessation programs in the town. I think we've read this and we've discussed...
So, it was, it's not an ordinance. That was my statement that evening, I don't know what I was thinking that evening. And I don't know why Suzanne always says she shouldn't do anything after 8 o'clock. Get the brain fried up, clock and hour. It's a policy of the select board, it's not an ordinance. So, technically, we don't have to have a public hearing. I always like to shed a slide, side on, self-cautioning these things. And I think we probably should still have one, but if you all don't want to have one, just move forward with it. I'm only one person. But I think that we can... Had it until 21st, no. We could, we could deal with it after...
After the 21st, then next month.
After the 28th, which is... So, we could post it for the 28th to, the public hearing start at 6:30. And then we'll start the meeting immediately following. If that works for us all.
Yep.
We'll move it to public hearing. I think that's a great idea. It'll go a little longer anymore, because my hope and desire is that we'll have it finalized on the 21st for the warrant. The deadline is the 28th according to the statute, so we have a buffer if we need it. I'm hoping we don't have to, after the 21st. We have plenty to worry about. Plenty more work to do, but we won't have any more finalizing, hopefully. So, we can do it that night. 6:30. We were, Caroline, probably there's no...
The public hearing will be at 6:30?
Yes, on the 28th. And then we'll immediately go into the meeting after that.
From the New Hampshire D.R.A., equalization of municipal assessment data certificate. We, the undersigned, do hereby certify that the assessment and sales information provided by us on the New Hampshire Mosaic Equalization System has been thoroughly reviewed by this board and is completely accurate to the best of our knowledge. And we are all expected to sign.
I'm not gonna lie to anyone, I haven't thoroughly examined it, so I don't really want to sign it yet, but I would like to go in and look at it. It's actually been prepared by Mr. Roberts from Avatar. So, but I would like to go into...
Is that the portal?
Yeah. We can do it, yeah, it doesn't have to, let me just return and read one. Doesn't, is there none of the deadline there? It has to be, I don't want to miss. All right, so...
Do you want to put a sticky note?
Yeah, I don't want to roll down. The document has to scan into the portal to the state. Scratch out. Hold for next week. I'm gonna go and look. This time, there's nothing else in that folder.
There's a P.O.
Now, my handwriting's terrible. Catchy.
Okay, purchase order. 1569, I'll move purchase order 1569 to the Rollins Postmaster, the amount of $1,100 for 2,200 stamps. And there's a note here that stamp prices go up five cents. Five cents on 127.
Yeah, I'll second that. So, what is she doing, buying it for years? She's buying it for rubber stamps?
I think so, yeah. So, we're ahead of the game for... They're going up five cents a stamp again, huh? I'm gonna buy some stamps too, actually.
Yeah, me too, but it's by the end of the month, they're gonna go up, right?
Buy some extra stamps.
Yep.
I hope I don't lose them. I don't know how I do it. They're not books anymore, they're sheets, so I don't know how you lose a sheet. Okay, purchase order 1569 has been moved and seconded for postage, the amount of $1,100. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? That's why she knows she needs them. Save a few bucks.
One more, correspondence. From your friends at Xfinity. Dear Chairman and members of the board, we are committed to keeping you and your customers informed. Xfinity TV changes, and I'm writing to inform you that MGM TV has terminated its contract with Comcast for distribution of MGM HD and Impact. Yep, no one does. Effective February 1st, 2019, as a result, must remove this program from our lineup and on to the library.
I apologize to all those folks that enjoyed MGM. It's not like Metro-Goldman-Mayer, is it?
Attention, maybe, I don't know.
No, my husband was running, he people, no. Well, I think, is that MGM? Is that the Lion? Elizabeth watches it in nauseam, so we already own it. We don't have to live rely on Comcast, so...
And from our friends at, I actually like that one. Great Bay Matters magazine. Actually, it's pretty cool, isn't it? Yeah.
Okay, anything else, any folders?
Nope.
Probably in the red one, actually.
What's this?
All right, then, I should know this by now. Community input.
So, you live on Paul Washington Street. Will the board be sending out reminders to committee chairs and so forth for their annual reports for the...
I don't think...
Have I done that already?
Kate does that.
Yeah, we do.
We did?
I did it from both last year.
Yeah, I thought I got Mike and Kate.
And just giving up the deadline of what it's due. So, we have it for printing. And the specifications, I know in the past, it had to be a PDF, because Word doesn't work on all computers.
You know more about it than I do. Okay, so reminders about community reports.
Community reports.
And department heads. And department head, after the right. For town report.
And then my other question was, will residence tax bills be sent out, or will they not be sent out with the current petition warrant article?
They will be sent, well, that's a good question. When are they usually issued? I don't remember.
I don't think they get issued out until after the election. Oh, and after the town meeting, right?
Yeah.
Town for the year, right? Aren't they done?
Well, if you have, if your birthday falls before equal, you have to pay it to register your car.
Well, you're on 10 bucks.
So, then, do you get refunded, or are you out $10?
Let me tell you a better story. No, you're not gonna get refunded $10. When the legislature decided, in its internal legislature, in 2011, I guess, to reduce, was it? Yes, reduce the cost to, the surcharge to rent through your vehicle. It went into effect in June. I was born in May. I didn't get my $45 or whatever it was, so I feel your pain.
You give it on the other end.
Exactly. You'll make it up for decades.
No, you'll lose. So will I, so I'm a February baby.
I'm just asking...
You owe $10 too, sorry. Well, that's a good point, though. We shouldn't be mailing these out at a cost of X.
Well, we should be printing them or mailing them, right?
Right. Well, we don't know if it's gonna pass.
So, you do it out to March. Was there a deadline when it had to be done?
I've never sent them out. It's a good question for our tax collector, we can ask him. I think they're due April something, or April 1st or 15th, probably, right?
But they won't usually let you register your car if your birthday is after the due date.
But if they don't mail them, they can't stop you from registering your cars.
Right.
It goes on the next year. Yeah, that makes sense? Like, so would you go back in, did you must have paid, or 2019, you must have paid 2018, right?
We have to pay it in May, because in order to register one vehicle in my house, it's May, and one vehicle's June. So, in order to register a vehicle in May, my husband and I both pay our residence tax.
All right, well, then you should be...
In May. But I'm thinking about, if I have family here, their birthdays are March and April.
I don't know, Celia's here with you.
We'll find out.
You can make a note to ask, making a note to ask the tax collector.
You would have paid more, right?
What is it, the head tax?
I know, but you can print what they want. If they haven't already printed it, they can move it out if, based on the...
If you don't consider it, you might have some angry people that are...
They can't make you pay something if they haven't sent it out to you. So, if they're planning on this going forward, I mean, why would you print these out if you have a petition warrant call, which has their signatures on it, mind you, in the office over there?
You're not gonna get, see, because every year I would go in, just something I get stuck doing here. I go in and register my wife's car, who was born this month. Means I gotta go on to do it this week. And I say, oh, I gotta pay Kate head tax. And they say, no, you don't, you gotta pay in May, because we haven't issued them yet. So, I'm guessing that your relatives that don't live here yet, or if they ever may live here, who knows? This exercise we're going through may not may, because they won't be issued yet, so... Anything else for tonight? All right, have a nice night, everybody.
Thank you.
Sorry to give you a headache. A lot for rebate.
Yeah, I gave them a rebate.
You know what?
A donation?
No, 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 no.
I donated my $20 in pizza money, or whatever it was, popsicle money, so...
That's $20, that's 10 for each.
I know, I know.